This meeting is called to order. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this special meeting of the City of Boynton Beach City Commission. Today is Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, and the time is now 6:01 PM. As with all of our meetings, the same rules of civility and decorum apply. City Clerk, if you could please begin the roll call.
Mayor Penzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, City Clerk. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Commissioner Woodrow Hay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Commissioner Amy Kelly. Let's all stand for the invocation, followed by the pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day in sunny South Florida. We ask now that you be in the midst of our decision that we make here, and it will be pleasing in your sight, and will be for the betterment of the citizen of Boynton Beach. We ask, Lord, that you allow us to come together, bless everyone that's on this dais, keep us strong, and give us wisdom as we move Boynton forward. And we ask it all in your Savior's name, we pray. Let every heart say, "Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to agenda approval, additions, deletions, or corrections. Let's go around the days, beginning with Commissioner Hay. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I have none.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
No amendments.
Commissioner Turkin?
No.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
We have a motion, and we have a second from Vice Mayor Cruz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. The agenda is approved. Moving on to informational items by members of the city commission. Let's begin on my left side. Commissioner Kelly.
My only disclosure is I had an opportunity to meet with Rob Singer on this item.
All right. Commissioner Turkin?
Oh, man, I probably met the whole east side of Boynton Beach on this one, and Rob Singer as well.
All right. Vice Mayor Cruz?
I've spoken to Rob Singer and met with Bradley Miller.
And Commissioner Hay?
I have none.
As for myself, I have spoken to the representatives of Time Equities. That would be Bradley Miller, Rob Singer, and of course, Mr. Oyer. Now, we're moving forward with item C. This is the public hearing for proposed ordinance number 23-004. It is a first reading. Now, I would like to turn to our counsel, Mr. Michael Cirillo, to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance title. An ordinance of the city commission for the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a development agreement with Boynton Beach Town Center Apartments LLC and Affiliated Time Equities, Inc., and providing for an effective date. And, Mr. Mayor, and members of the commission, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine Roswell to go through the particulars of this item. This is, the item before you tonight is the development agreement. This is the first of two public hearings under the development agreement. So any vote you take this evening is not the final vote unless it's a denial. If you move it forward with a positive vote, the second public hearing is set for next Tuesday, February 21st. Again, the issue tonight is under development agreement. What is not before you, although it's related to this, is the master plan. The master plan will be coming to you formally on the 21st, and that's where you look at it as if it was a site plan. This has, this verbalizes a lot of the terms and conditions in the master plan. But say, for example, on Tuesday, if you do something with the master plan that requires a change of development agreement, that can be done on Tuesday night. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask anybody who intends to speak on this item, I'm going to swear you in, because there is, it is in the nature of a development order. And again, this is the first of two public hearings. So we'll be doing this again on Tuesday night for the second one, if this moves forward. So if you intend to speak, just raise your right hand. If you think you might speak, members of the public, et cetera. If you're getting testimony, in case you need to, do you swear affirm the statements or testimony you give this evening should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do at this point is turn it over to Ms. Roswell. She's the city's special counsel for Town Square. She's been working on this directly with my office and Mark Lynn and representatives of Time Equity to go through her presentation. And then she'll be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, counsel. Let's begin, Ms. Roswell, thank you.
All right, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you via Zoom. As your city attorney said, I'm Catherine Roswell with Lewis Longman &amp; Walker. Here is your special counsel on this and certain related matters. And so I appreciate you allowing me to appear this way before you tonight. And, Monty, if you'd go to the next slide, please. So we are here tonight, as you know, to talk about Town Square. And so before we get into the nuts and bolts of the agreement, nuts before you, I want to walk through a little bit of the history, both in terms of the actual project and the legislation that enables this kind of agreement. So you have the full picture of what it is that you're considering tonight. So as you all may recall, the Town Square property was originally owned by the city, and it was the subject of a request for qualifications. Through that process, a developer was selected named U2L. And under that process, Phase 1 of the project was successfully completed. And that's where you are tonight, that's City Hall. That also includes the library, amphitheater, parks, and some other public amenities that were all a part of the Town Square project. Unfortunately, the private portions of that project were never constructed. Man, if you go to the next slide, please. And as a result of that failure to construct, the city sued various JKM entities who were supposed to be the developers of the private portions of the project. That lawsuit does remain active today, although the city has previously voted to approve a settlement agreement. That settlement agreement is specifically contingent on the city entering into a development agreement with the contract purchaser of JKM property. That is, for the city's protection, they currently have a development agreement in place with JKM. And so for the city's protection, ensuring that another development agreement is entered into before that development agreement is exited, just continues the city's ability to exercise some control over development of the property. And so, because we are limited, I'm sorry, if you could go back just for a second? Thank you. The contract purchaser for the JKM property is Boynton Beach Town Center Apartments LLC, also known as Time Equities. And so that is who we have been discussing a development agreement with for the past several months. Next slide, please. So again, given just the history of this land, there are a number of puzzle pieces that make this whole picture work. Some of those have come before you tonight, previously, some are before you tonight, and then some will be before you on the 21st. As you may recall, you entered into a land swap agreement to exchange certain parcels within the Town Square footprint. That agreement was entered into, but the closing of that, the actual swap, would not be effectuated until later down the line, assuming that the development agreement is improved and Time Equities is able to purchase the remaining property from JKM. The city also, through its RFQ process, had put in place some requirements to provide various forms of public parking. So the agreements to ensure that the city has continued access to parking would also need to be put in place, which will be before you on the 21st. And then to ensure that everything comes together at just the right time, there is an escrow agreement or escrow agreements that will be entered into, to sort of put things into a lockbox, to ensure that, once everything is ready to go, it all becomes effective at the same time, just to ensure a smooth process. All right, so next slide, please. So with that said, that means that even if this development agreement is approved by you as the city commission through the series of public hearings that are coming before you, there are still a few stepping stones before it would actually become an active agreement. First, of course, you would have to approve it, as would the developer. The master plan that envisions the build-out of this project would need to be approved. This settlement agreement would be able, need to be able to go into effect to settle the lawsuit between the city and JKM. The developer would need to actually purchase the JKM parcels, and the closure on the land swap would need to occur, as well as the execution of the parking agreements. So again, this is a piece of a larger puzzle. And just to ensure that the city is getting what it needs in its contract, the effective date is delayed until all of those are in place. Next slide, please. So I also wanted to just briefly run through what a development agreement is, because they are kind of a unique creature in Florida statutes. They don't necessarily track like other development agreements that you may have seen before. And so I wanted to just sort of provide an understanding of what it is that you're looking at. They are agreements that are specifically authorized by statute, and they sort of provide a set of legal parameters that govern development thereunder. Freezing, they have the effect of freezing the land development regulations and the comprehensive plan in place for the life of the project. And the reason that it does that is to provide predictability for both the city and its planning efforts, and for the applicant and its development efforts. Next slide, please. So in looking at development as a whole, the Florida legislature previously made some findings that essentially boil down to, I won't read you the full statutory language, but the lack of certainty can result in public harm and loss of economic benefit, and discourage and encourage sort of bad planning within the city. And the next slide, please. But conversely, that providing predictability and assurance of build-out has some real public goods, including strengthening the public planning process, ensuring capital investment, assuring that there are adequate capital facilities in place, encouraging partnership between public and private entities, and reducing overall costs. All right, next slide, please. So this was put in as a supplement to the city's existing powers under the Community Planning Act. And the, you know, intent again is to encourage stronger commitment to planning, to ensure adequate public facilities, and efficient use of resources and inefficient costs. Next slide. So that's kind of the general background. Getting to specifically what we're talking about today, the Town Square project had sort of four phases of development in its plan. And by phases, we really mean four separate projects within the overall footprint. Phase 1, again, complete, where you find yourself tonight. Phase 4 would be the project that would take place on the land the city would own as a result of the land swap agreement. Currently, it's envisioned to be a hotel. Under the development agreement, the city could develop it, you know, in a number of equivalent ways. So the development agreement would really govern Phases 2 and 3, which are the private portions of the project. Next slide. So Phase 1 would be the South parcel. As Mike mentioned, the particulars of each development are actually the subject of the master plan that will come before you in a full public hearing on the 21st. So the details of that, as it is, as it goes through that process, would be incorporated into the development agreement. This is what's in there pursuant to the master plan that's been submitted, an eight-story building with residential and commercial components, height and floor area ratio based off an ability of the applicant to participate in a workforce housing program, and a parking garage. Next slide, please. The other phase, Phase 3 is the North parcel, very similar setup, eight-story building, bought 1,000-piece parking space, parking garage, heightened FAR based on participation in the workforce housing program, and a mix of residential and commercial. I will note that the applicant increased the commercial space fairly significantly in response to reaction from council and planning and development. And so they more than doubled the commercial space they were originally providing. All right, next slide. Parking, again, as we mentioned, the parking was originally part of the RFP. And so the result of this development agreement includes provision of public parking, both temporarily while the parking garages are being constructed, and permanently, we say permanently, it's about 100-year lease for the parking garage. Once it is constructed, there's also a number of circuit surface parking spaces that are provided. It ends in a net 100 spaces in excess of what is required by code. That is to mitigate for existing kind of shortfalls that exist on the site, and to provide parking just above and beyond what is required or needed simply for the public good. Next slide, please. The agreement also calls for some additional public contributions, a $1 million art fee. Now, that is set pursuant to the ordinance that you all approved on first reading. And if it is approved on second reading, it would allow an alternative art fee structure. So $1 million contribution in art fee, $180,000 contribution to public restroom facilities to provide restrooms for the Town Square project as a whole. And then the developer has agreed to bear the cost of burying the power lines upon Boynton Beach Boulevard that will require cooperation with the city, but it will be done at the developer's expense. Next. Approvals under the development agreement. It's important to understand what we're not doing tonight, which is we're not preapproving, if this goes through, any particular approvals. So site plans, sign programs, all of that would still have to go through the normal processes. If it's required to come before you now, it would be required to come before you after the development agreement is entered into, be fully vetted through those processes. However, in deference to the fact that development agreements typically serve larger projects built over a longer period of time, the master plan and site plans would be valid for longer. And you'll notice that the site plan timeframe is significantly longer than the master plan. And that is to encourage the applicant to submit their site plans early, having comfort that they won't expire. And so it's trying to sort of front-load the process and keep the momentum at the beginning. And again, art fee to $1 million, and the city will agree to process the applications on an expedited basis. Next slide. The applicant is still required to meet all concurrency requirements. The city has confirmed that it does have the capacity to provide the water and sewer necessary to serve the project. However, any upgrades to the actual infrastructure would be at the developer's expense. So if the pipes aren't big enough, if a new pump is required, anything like that, that will be the responsibility of the developer. The easements that currently exist on the project property for provision of public services would be replaced with easements more appropriate to the project before you, as opposed to the previous project. Next slide. The developer would have five years from the effective date to obtain a building permit for vertical construction, and then 5.5 years to commence construction. Under current LDRs statute and building code, the developer is entitled to seek extensions. However, through this contract, they are agreeing to limit their ability to seek extensions that would push the commencement of construction past 7.5 years without first seeking the permission of the city. Next slide. If construction is started and not continued, the city has the ability to terminate the development agreement after a process it would require. If there's no site work that happens for a year that passes inspection, the city can put the developer on notice, give them a cure period. If the developer fails to cure, the city can call them to a public hearing, and subject to normal due process requirements, if it found that the developer was not meeting its obligations, could terminate the agreement. Next slide. The city would annually review the project for compliance with the development agreement. So once a year, that is a statutory requirement. And then starting six years after development, because recall that construction has to start at 5.5 years, the developer would provide an annual written report to the city concerning the status of the project. That requirement is, in addition to what is required by statute, that it would be put in place by the ordinance, the development agreement ordinance that you all are currently considering. Next. Thank you very much. Importantly, default in this agreement, the remedies here are specific performance, which means doing what it is that you are obligated to do under the contract, and damages, meaning money harm that has come to the wronged party. Generally speaking, the development agreement is not terminated for minor defaults, except in a few specific circumstances, which I spoke a little bit about. We'll detail some more below. But this is, you know, think of this like a marriage. It takes a lot of consideration to get into, relatively difficult to get out of. That is for the benefit of both parties, considering that, again, this is intended to provide predictability and good planning. Next slide. But, like marriages, sometimes you want to break up. So by mutual consent of the parties, if they decide that this is not working, the development agreement could be terminated. If the project is completed, if we've done our jobs here, the agreement will terminate. If they do not start construction within seven and a half years, the city can vote to terminate. And then 10 years after they get a building, a vertical construction permit, the agreement would terminate. So in other words, having the vertical construction permit automatically extends the life of the development agreement, so that it lives through the development of the project, but capping that term of development at 10 years. And then, because the Florida statutes provide that development agreements may not last longer than 30 years, in any event, we have just put that it will expire 30 years at the latest. Next slide. Again, if they fail to reasonably prosecute construction, if they do not start things on time, the city could terminate the agreement. It is important to note that there is no mechanism in here that would be, that would require the developer to construct the project. This property is owned by a private party. It is going into the hands of a private party. So the government simply doesn't have a mechanism to force construction. It can incentivize it through this agreement, and so that's what it's designed to do. Again, otherwise, the ability to terminate is fairly limited. But it is important to note that termination would not remove the parking at any point in time. Next slide. Couple of other things. If there's a catastrophe, a war, a hurricane, a pandemic that stops everyone from coming into the office, that makes performance under this impossible, the performance deadlines would be extended for the length of the emergency plus 120 days. But in order to take advantage of that, each party must notify the other within 60 days of the onset of the catastrophe. And this agreement would run with the land, meaning if the developer chose to sell the property, the new purchaser would inherit this development agreement. That is set by statute as well, and this document will be recorded, so that will be apparent to everyone involved. With that, I am happy to answer, if you want to go to the next slide, any questions that you may have about this.
Well, thank you so much, Catherine, for that presentation. This is the time I'm going to turn to my colleagues on the days to pose any questions or comments to our special counsel here, Catherine Roswell. Let's begin this time on my right side with Commissioner Hay. Commissioner Hay, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Roswell?
My questions have been answered in the different sessions that I've attended. So I don't have any at this time, but I may have some later.
We will go through the rounds. All right, let's do Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions or comments for counsel?
Thank you for that thorough presentation. I had the opportunity to meet with all the attorneys, as well as staff, several times to talk about this and ask a lot of questions. A lot of my questions were answered at that point. One of the questions I asked at that point, which I believe Catherine has answered, is how will the city be protected, given that this will be private property? And the understanding, Catherine, is that the parking agreement will be in place regardless of if the property is ever sold, or there's ever a termination in the contract. Is that correct?
That's correct. So for example, again, by law, the development agreement will expire after 30 years. You're entering into a 100-year parking lease agreement. So that's correct.
Thank you. And then we will have a parking agreement or a lease agreement of 100 years. My question would be, is there any possibility to make that agreement in perpetuity versus 100 years? I know I might not even be alive in 100 years, so it'll be for a different generation. But it's something that I would like to ask if the developer will consider.
So we can certainly talk about that between first and second reading. Typically, 100 years is the standard for something like this for several reasons. One, we don't expect parking garages to be standing in 100 years. While they may be well-constructed, and that's really not what they're anticipated to do. And in general, land development does kind of tend to alter, so we can certainly raise that with them. But I will tell you that 100 years or 99-year leases are fairly standard for this type of agreement.
Thank you. Yep, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to turn now to my left, which is Commissioner Turkin. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this has been a long-drawn process. We've all spoken with legal, we've all spoken with staff. I just want to thank legal, I want to thank staff, I want to thank the community for getting involved in this. This has been a huge project. I know staff has been working tirelessly, you know, along with Time Equities. And so I just really want to thank everyone for the hard work, because we were handed something that was not of our doing, and we have to clean up this mess. So I want to throw that out there. And I want to reiterate, and just so I understand, this essentially is just to keep the conversation going. We are not voting on a master site plan. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So the site plan comes before you at a full public hearing on the 21st. Additionally, by law, development agreements must be considered at two public hearings. So regardless of how you vote tonight, if you approve it, it is not effective until a second public hearing takes place. That is scheduled for the 21st. So yes, the effect of approving it tonight is simply to keep the process moving.
Perfect.
Nothing binding occurs tonight, Mr.?
Thank you for that clarification, Catherine. I think I'm going to withhold my comments until I hear some public audience and speak with Time Equities.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Catherine, are you a, I guess I just want to, you know, make sure that we're all, we understand the case status. I know you said that it's active, but can you just briefly give us kind of a summary as far as where the litigation is?
Sure. Sure. So the, again, the city is the plaintiff in the case, and they have sued JKM for nonperformance, essentially. That's what it boils down to. The city has entered into a development, excuse me, a settlement agreement with JKM. That settlement agreement is contingent on the city entering into another contract. So what that means is that litigation is still active. The court is aware there's a settlement agreement. However, there's nothing preventing the court from immediately setting this for trial, if it's so desired. It's also important to remember that what the city is bringing forth in that lawsuit is to essentially have JKM perform their contract. So in the event that this, that lawsuit is not settled, and the city goes forward and wins that lawsuit, the net result of that is that the city continues to partner with JKM.
Mr. Mayor, just let me clarify, so there is no, I'm sorry, there is no trial order. So even though the judge?
That's correct. No trial date is set. It is at the court's discretion to do so, but there is no trial date set.
Catherine, one moment. Mr. Cirillo, could you please complete your sentence?
Oh, she did it.
Oh, she did it all right.
I'm sorry, Mike.
That's all right. That's the technical issues we have here. Yes, you probably, but yes, there is no trial order, so we're not on a trial docket. And typically, you would get a trial order that says forth a lot of things, like discovery deadlines, dispositive motions. We never got that. So yes, the judge could pursue, but right now seems unlikely that anything would happen while we're considering this in this short timeframe.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to hold my comments.
All right. Commissioner Turkin, any follow-ups?
Just, I don't know if now is the appropriate time, but there was a segment in there about infrastructure. I just wanted to hear from Punam, if, can we just get reassurance on the infrastructure, or will we discuss this later?
So before we go to Dr. Calcutta, Catherine, could you go to that slide about the infrastructure?
Sure. Actually, that's, Monty, if you want to go back, oh, sorry, go forward. It's on the slide label concurrency. Go forward, please, one more. There we go.
And Catherine, could you just update us again, provide some clarity? What about the infrastructure?
Sure. So the Town Square project was originally designed to, I mean, it was really originally designed as a whole project with the thought that there would be the public and private components as originally envisioned constructed. And so to that end, there's already a series of infrastructure pieces that have been installed in the ground. In other words, there's pipes, there's pipes in the dirt that already exist. The city had also undertaken the work of examining whether it had the ability to provide water and sewer to the site. And so with this new proposal that's come in, and looking at the master plan that the applicant has submitted, legal and staff worked with your utility department to see whether the city could still say that it has the ability to provide the water and sewer that the project as envisioned would require. The answer to that is yes. It is also important to note that because of the way the actual infrastructure is installed, there are some limitations on how the developer could install their infrastructure, but, and they've agreed in the development agreement to do that. And that it's not a closed-loop system, but it is, there is a limited amount of development that is impacted by that particular system. And so there is sufficient capacity there. It's anticipated to be sufficient capacity, and it's not holding up any other development to sort of reserve that capacity into the future. However, in the event that what is needed to service the project, this is not correct in the ground, and which is not something that we would typically know until site plan, which again, will come back before you, it will be the responsibility of the developer to make those physical upgrades.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Punam Calcutta, Director of Utilities. And just like Catherine said, basically, we looked at everything that's in place already. There were a lot of infrastructure put in place, anticipating some of these developments that were going to come. And so that's been in place, so that's already been taken care of. And we looked at, if they were going to do anything more, then they would have to, that be on their cost, on their dime. But other than that, we don't anticipate any reasons for us not meeting capacity based on what's in the ground and what's being proposed right now.
And Dr. Calcutta, can you reassure the community, and with not just what's going on with here, but all the other projects going on in the city, that we do have the capacity in respect to infrastructure to support this?
Yes, yes, we do, and?
We do have a lot of other projects coming up.
Correct. And what we do is we always evaluate whether we need to upsize any pipes and so and so forth. So capacity from the plant, we are perfectly fine with. Sometimes the pipes in the ground or pump stations that need to be upgraded, upsized, that happens all the time. And if it is due to a development that's happening, then it's on the developer's time to do it. And unless the city is already planning on upsizing something or replacing something, because we already know that more and more demand's going to be there. So we evaluate that demand on a regular basis.
So given of the potential impact from these other projects, and this potential project, you can confidently say we can support the infrastructure of what is being proposed?
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification.
All right. All right, anything else, Commissioner Turkin?
Nope, thank you.
All right, any other follow up questions or comments from my colleagues, Vice Mayor, then Commissioner Hay?
I, I do have, just for clarity's sakes, the question that was asked about the other projects, somebody's pipes that are down there are clay pipes. And with the pounding, they have a tendency to crack. Is that you saying, that I hear you say that would be the responsibility of the developer to repair?
If they are causing something that, if we already know a pipe needs to be replaced, then it's on our, we have to replace those pipes. If it's something that we don't think there's anything that needs to be replaced, the pipe's in good condition, and something was to happen because of construction, then we'll have to evaluate it and look at it and see whether there was something that the developer did that caused it, or was it something that we had to take care of on, by ourselves? So it depends. They can't say that it's always going to be the developer who's going to have to do it. Because if the pipe, we, we do condition assessments, but we may not know exactly how every inch of that pipe is. So if we go back and see whether that was something that we should have replaced, then we do it on our, the utility cost. But most of the time, if it's a developer based, if they have caused something, then they are replacing it.
But it would be our responsibility to maintain?
Yes, yes. Everything that is outside the development would be ours to maintain, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you so much. Catherine, I just wanted to ask you if you could chime in on that as well, to make sure that the legal language supports what's, what's been stated.
Right, so there's nothing in this agreement that transfers the city's obligation to maintain its public infrastructure or accept liability for any fault that, that already exists to the developer. This doesn't transfer the liability. What it does, and under normal circumstances, again, the developer is responsible for harm that it causes. What this agreement does say, if what's in the ground is fully functional right now, but is insufficient in some way to serve the project, either by capacity or by function, so if it's needed to be rerouted, if it needs to be upsized, if a new pump is required, anything like that, any kind of upgrade would be the responsibility of the developer.
Thank you, Ms. Roswell. Now I'm going to turn to my colleague, Vice Mayor Cruz, if you have any questions or comments.
Just, just one question. I know we're going to be getting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for public restrooms. Will that be now or in the near future? How does that work?
Sure, so the development agreement provides that they will, that the development agreement provides that the, the funding will be for public restroom facilities. It is the current thought of staff that that would be used to procure portable restroom facilities of, like a high end kind, that could be mostly located within the town square project, however, could be moved if the city had a need offsite for an event or a disaster relief area or something like that, and then come back to town square. So in the event that the portable restroom facilities are what's purchased, they, the developer would be obligated to pay. I think it's within thirty or forty five days of receiving a receipt from the city that has made that purchase. If the city were to construct restrooms, which is not the thought, then that would be after the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, that's all.
So when we get the restrooms, the, the developer would make the payment. I'm sorry, when we pay for the restrooms, the developer would make the payment, yeah.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. I see that there's a follow up with Commissioner Hay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, just, just remind me again of what the city code, I believe you stated forty four spaces over and beyond what the city code is. What, what, what's the city code?
Sure, so let me, Manny, would you mind going back to the slide that says parking? So there are much more spaces than forty four that would be coming to the city. There are forty four spaces between the two garages that are above and beyond what's required by code in terms of providing parking for the phase one facilities and providing parking for the phase two and phase three facilities. So those public spaces are just additional public good. And in addition, there's sixty six surface parking spaces, so spaces that are not in a garage, meaning a total of one hundred parking spaces above and beyond what's required by code. What's currently on site, there is a bit of a parking deficit, and so some of those spaces are used to sort of make up for that deficit. But a number of those spaces, the, the majority of those spaces are simply additional public parking for use by the public. And again, the, the actual spaces that the city would be entering into a lease for, which would be within the parking garages, would be four hundred and seventy three spaces, and that's to support the public uses by phase one, as well as those forty four parking spaces just for, for public use. Did I answer your question?
Yes, it did, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hay. As for myself, I'll reserve the majority of my comments until after public comments. I also have a series of questions, but I recognize that this evening, my questions, I'm gonna keep them focused to development agreement. Catherine, you know, you've heard me say this phrase before, which is, you know, we hope for the best, but we plan for the worst. And, you know, this is one of those sticking points that I mentioned about the previous agreement that was approved before this commission. There were things that went wrong, and there were insufficient protections in place. And what essentially has happened, and this is a point that I want to make sure the public is aware, but because of the decisions made in the past by prior leadership, we had public land that became private land. And with that changed the kind of leverages and the things we could ask. So I understand that we no longer own it, right? I understand that. So Catherine, could you talk again, and I know you mentioned it, but I, I really need to be convinced. Tell me about the protections for the city. What would happen if, for example, they don't construct at all? Let's begin with that scenario.
The development agreement could be terminated.
Complete construction.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mayor?
Scenario where they don't construct as promised. And let's consider the scenario where they partially construct and it remains incomplete. Because that's the last thing we want, which is half completed buildings, exposed brick and all of that. Let's run through those scenarios and what protections are in place in this agreement.
Sure, so again, this development agreement is set up to be what's essentially an incentive structure, meaning that our, our biggest stick, the biggest enforcement mechanism we have is termination of the agreement. So in either of the scenarios that you described, where development does not commence, or where development commences but isn't continued, the city has the ability to, through a form of, through processes, set out in the agreement to terminate the agreement. So there, there are different processes. If, if construction never starts within, if it does not start within seven and a half years, the city has the ability to terminate the agreement by vote of commission. If construction starts, but then stops for, for a period of a year, and by stop, we mean no site work, and that is approved. So permits are issued, that permit gets inspected, so they would have to pass inspection on site work at least once a year, essentially. And if that does not happen, the city would provide them notice. After that notice, the developer is given a cure period, a couple of months to, to bring, to start construction again. If they start construction again, the city can withdraw its notice. If they do not start construction again, and it's important to note that that construction must be reasonably designed to bring the project to completion, so it can't just be something happened, it has to be something happened that reasonably moves the project forward towards completion. And that's determined at a public hearing. If the city determines that that is not happening, then the city has the ability to terminate agreement. That public hearing would be subject to normal due process requirements, which means that the developer would be able to come and speak on their behalf, which makes sense for terminating an agreement, but it would be the city commission's decision.
So Catherine, let's imagine that scenario where, you know, that they've started, and then there's no action for whatever reason, and they come back to the commission, we've, we've made our notice, and they come back to the commission. Who decides if sufficient action has been taken to cure?
The city commission makes that decision, and it would be based on, under, again, normal city processes, substantial competent evidence.
Okay, and let's also consider, just one more question for now, because I know others have questions and others would like to speak. But worst case scenario, you know, being that this is privately owned land, and like any other privately owned land, if they were to sell this, would this agreement hold up? And would the clock restart, or would it stay the same?
Clock would not restart, but the agreement would transfer to the new owner. So the, the dates are all set based on the effective date. Once that effective date is set, it's set in stone. And so you would essentially, it would be a one for one. You would just take the new developer's name, insert it wherever the, the current, where Time Equities or B B T C A's name is in the agreement, and it would just proceed as if it were the same developer. But it does run with the land, and that is by statute. So again, it's a recorded document, whoever purchased the land would be subject to the agreement, they'd be bound by the obligations they're in. And the city would be obligated to treat them in the same manner as they are Time Equities and B B T C A.
Excellent, thank you for the clarification, Catherine. You know, those were the kind of protections that should have been in place, but were not in previous agreements. Now I'd like to follow up, is I see that Commissioner Hay has his hand up, go ahead, Commissioner.
Just to extend what, what the mayor was saying here. I, I guess in the case of a natural disaster, we would have to come back and, because we have, we could have a major hurricane come through here, God forbid. But we would have to come back at that point and renegotiate. Would there be any word to that type of catastrophe?
So the, the agreement is designed to remain intact for as long as possible. But as you mentioned, we're in Florida, we get hurricanes. So there's a clause in there called the force majeure clause. And what it says, and hurricanes are one of the listed events, that in certain times of catastrophe, if that catastrophe renders one party or both parties unable to perform through no fault of their own, then their, then their deadlines to perform are extended for the length of the emergency. So plus a hundred and twenty days, because if you think about a hurricane, so, okay, so the hurricane is gone, and that may have delayed things by, I mean, we'll even say it's delayed it by a month, just, just based on rational things. After that, there would normally be a couple of months that you might need to ramp back up. If you think about a hurricane, again, supplies are down, depending on the level of devastation, they may need to be, you know, clearing of the site that's done. You know, if they were trying to get construction started on the site and the hurricane left a bunch of debris, clearly, they would need a little bit of additional time to clean that up before they could meet their, their deadlines. Same thing with the city, the city has obligated itself to expedite their approval process. And so if a pandemic came and all city employees had to go home, and there were not, you know, they didn't have the ability to work from home in the same way, or something else happened, the city would have the ability to, to say that, okay, it's not meeting its expedited permitting deadlines. However, that's as a result of this catastrophe, and so the city would avoid a breach of contract by invoking this clause. Importantly, this clause really is, is designed so that it cannot be used as sort of an excuse later on in time. So if there is a catastrophe, the party that intends to claim force majeure under that catastrophe has to notify the other party within two months. So it cannot be the case that years later, they come back and say, oh, but you remember there was a pandemic, there was a supply chain shortage, there was a something else back two years ago, and that's why we're where we are today. If the catastrophe causes interference, that interference must be noticed to the other party within sixty days.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, colleagues. I'd like to now open the floor for public comments.
Good, I apologize for interrupting, but I did also just want to recognize really briefly that Francis Greenberger, who's the chairman and CEO of Time Equities, and Robert Singer are there as well, as it is a public hearing, and they're the applicants. I did just want to note that they're there for you.
All right, thank you for that, and, and welcome, gentlemen. Again, I'm going to open the floor now to public comments. As always, it is three minutes per person. We will go back and forth between the two podiums. After we've completed all in person public comments, that is the end, by which we will take digital hands raised online. And then after the in person comments, we'll go online. So if you would like to speak specifically on the developer agreement, the proposed agreement, please approach the podium now, and I'll begin the clock. And as always, please state your name for the record. All right, we do have two podiums, we can go back and forth.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Keith. I live at six forty one Shore Drive. I am a director of ANCA, and would like to speak on behalf of the, of the applicant. We met with Robert Singer last week, and he did a great job of, of explaining to us, you know, their vision for this project. I realize that this is not a master site plan hearing, it's about the developer's agreement. But based upon what I've researched on time equities, as well as Robert's vision and what he has explained to us, I feel very confident that this particular developer not only has the pedigree to do this project, but is well capitalized, and has, has done several projects throughout the United States, and has a, has a history of doing those on time, and, and with superior architecture and development prowess. So from that particular standpoint, I feel comfortable that this is the, this is the right development group for this project. Unlike some of the past development groups that didn't have the pedigree, this one does have the pedigree to get it done. So based upon that, I would ask your support for this particular developer. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to ask or answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to the next public comment speaker. Please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, this is, yeah, my name's Harry Woodworth, I live at the six eight five Northeast fifteenth place. I'm also a director of ANCA. Joe didn't mention it, but he, he's a developer. He's does it for a living, until he retired recently. So he does know something about it, unlike me. I've just come to the commission meetings for the last three decades. We've pretty much not been on the same team here with the commissioners, the CRA directors and staff, who've been pushing density, height, and all that that brings. And here we are. So I'd now like to speak on behalf of the applicant, because we also talked to Mr. Singer, who I can't say enough about. In a prior life, I did projects in the hundred million dollar range all over the world. And it is really refreshing to deal with people who know what the hell they're talking about, have the, the knowledge of the subject matter and the integrity, the candor to talk to us. And I would point out that until Mr. Singer took us, not anyone in this room told us what the hell was going on. Really frustrating. So anyhow, it is what it is. We're not talking about the gorilla that's really in the room here, is that we've already spent over a hundred million dollars. Have no way to pay for that until this gets moving. And in my mind, that's what this agreement's all about, and the, the project will come later, we'll talk about the plans. We're about ten or eleven million dollars short right now on revenue to finance all the stuff we've already built. And you guys are paying the bills every year. Nice, I'm paying the bills too. So it would be nice to see this thing get going. Commissioner Turkin pointed out, he didn't create this, he didn't give away the land, he didn't do anything that's led us to where we are. After the twenty first, none of that will be true. Everyone sitting here will own it. So hopefully, that as we go forward, we look at this developer, we look at his credentials, we look at his track record. This isn't one of the yokels that's come before, we're not on a consent agenda like some of these projects have been. Finally dealing with a professional developer who's going to be a giant, high density project, which I do not in favor, have never favored. But folks, here we are. Your predecessors put us here, your CRA directors, your commissioners, your staff, all sold this stuff. High density, high stuff, overlays, zoning changes. Well, now we got it, so let's, let's do the best we can with what we got. And at some point, maybe somebody will talk to us about the gorilla in the room. And again, I'd like to thank Mr. Singer for being the first person who brought any light to this after a year of work. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other in person public comment speakers, please approach the podium now.
Hello, my name is Flynn Holland, and I live at six eighteen South Seacrest Boulevard. And we've had quite a run on the neighborhood association, talking about this project, what we know, what we don't know. I've read the information that I got from the agenda online, and there's a couple of things. One is parking's not going to be enough. How many employees are in Boynton? We're talking about, you know, eight hundred parking places, but some, you put out a, a thing that you wanted to have somebody have a breakfast or a shop in the cultural center, and you were marking it at twelve hundred. Is the parking going to be paid for, are we going to have to pay to park there? And then who's going to deal with all of the roads that are already overwhelmingly overwhelmed? And, you know, we walk here, we've seen the history here. We went to the charrettes long ago about what we wanted. We wanted a community cultural development in our area. We've gotten a beautiful library, a beautiful grassy area, and now we're going to have buildings that are closing it off. They're calling it, you know, canyons, and there's no walkability in there. We feel like we've been separated out of it. And I just don't see how the parking's going to happen, and it's not going to flow into the neighborhood. I can't see how the roads aren't going to be bumper to bumper. And if we do not agree to not over nine hundred units, are they going to want to have the property? I mean, we've already talked about that the high density is really intense in our community now. And we had agreed with J K M that it was going to be four hundred something, and it was going to be somewhat open, that, you know, there'd be restaurants in the charrette, we wanted walkability into restaurants. The restaurants are going to kind of be out on the edge. I just went down to Boca, we are not Boca, I realize it, but I went into a development that you walked into a nice landscaped area, and all along the edge were restaurants. Bringing people into the area, I just feel like we're going to have the city, and then we're going to have these canyons over it. And they're dense, and they're ugly, and then branding wise in Boynton, how do we want it to look? You know, we're, we've always branded along the way as, you know, along by the sea side and stuff. That building looks like any other building anywhere. Are we going to have, you know, color scheme, are we going to have some sort of beauty that makes it? And I'm not wild about apartments, I don't think they give us anything. And I know that they said that they were going to expand more of the commercial space, but as you can see, the commercial space is too expensive. We have empty spaces already, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I will say, I feel like a lot of the things you've asked and you mentioned will be addressed at the next meeting when we see the master plan. All right, next speaker?
Hi, Ernest George McDonald, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street, Unit four oh seven, Boynton Beach. It's also known as Harbor Hall Inlet Club, and my fourth floor unit actually sees this building, sees Ocean Avenue, sees Federal Highway, sees everything, I'm on the canal. actually sees this building, sees Ocean Avenue, sees Federal Highway, sees everything. I'm on the canal. I look right at the bridge. I look at Georgia's, the banana and everything going on. And what do I see? I I see a city now, an administration that seems to be blaming what they call the past administration for all this problem. But if you look at this dais, it's got the most senior people from that administration here. You have all the same everything that made it happen. You got the same city law firm. You got the same commissioners, the most long and powerful commissioners. And and Mayor, am I allowed to say Mayor Grant? Mayor Grant is still involved heavily in like real estate and developing and representing and involved in all this stuff. And you all you all voted yes for everything he wanted. That's why I don't get when you come here and you say, well, it's all his fault. We didn't want anything. But you voted for everything. So I don't understand how. And then you got so mad at him that all of a sudden, when the new administration takes over, you start firing everybody. You fire the city manager, who was the kingpin of all that. Was the absolute kingpin of all this overdevelopment that's really destroying the city. Now you say, well, you know, you're always negative. Listen, without these buildings here, this federal highway and ocean is a catastrophe. It's a parking, it's a pollution, it's a it's it's a life, health, safety hazard place. And now what you want to do is block out the sun, block out the moon, block out everything. There's no place to walk now. Where are all these people going to walk? And anytime you have an event in this city, you see where you have to let people park? You let them park on terraces, grass. You don't have enough parking now for for anything. And and look at how these other big developments like the Marina, look how they're flooding. Remember all the promises about the Marina? Oh, don't worry, we took care of all the flood. It's never going to flood. You need a motorboat to go half the time to half those restaurants. And by the way, look at the occupancy. You're never going to generate enough for a hotel. And even what you have now is half vacant. Nobody wants it. It's overpriced and there's no attraction in this city that I know of.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next public comment speaker. If you would like to speak on this item and you're in the chamber, please approach the podium now.
Hello, Cortland McGuire, 506 Whispering Pines Road. Thank you, everybody, for being here at this special meeting. Awesome things I just wanted to run through is I feel like this is kind of on a fast track and I understand why, but the city shouldn't be too left holding this all on their own. Basically, we saw this at PND. I'm a member of the PND Board, also of the Art Board. And we did vote the project down in the PND Board meeting. We made some recommendations and they were, some of those were changed. But they were speaking at public forum on a city commission meeting. They weren't formally on the agenda. Here we are today at a specially called meeting, which there's not very many members of the community here or online. And then on the 21st, it's going to be signed, sealed and delivered. I do feel like that's the way that this is going. And I'm not necessarily expressing my opinion. I'm just trying to outline some of these parameters. So, you know, I hear this was a previous commission a lot as well. But we have to really recognize that these two parcels really make up a large part of our downtown forever. I'm not really clear on the litigation. We sue JKM. What if we win? I know we're, you know, there's bonds talk. I really don't know that behind the curtain, what the money situation is. But, you know, maybe, you know, that's something. You know, if we win, what kind of wiggle room or what kind of leverage do we have at that point? So in our meeting, some of the things that were requested were, it was interesting because they wanted to reduce, the city staff wanted to reduce the commercial frontage in Boynton Beach from 70% to 30. Interesting timing that came in first, then this this presentation, which basically drew out plans to the 30%, not 70. We voted that down. I'm glad to see that. I'm glad that the developer made these concessions because they recognized that we do want commercial. We want destination retail. The commission, the PND said that, and they did make concessions for that. I feel like it's personally not enough. I want more. You know, the whole bottom floor of both buildings would be ideal. It's not clear about the parking. There's five. To me, it was mentioned in our board meeting that there was 500 plus spaces or 400 plus spaces for government. Are some of those spaces available for public after hours or during hours? Not really clear. I think the community really wants to know about parking. And it's really a little bit of gray area. In the, I also attended a Zoom meeting or a team meeting just the other day. You know, this is, I guess, everything very quickly, a 25-day period or less, which was very, you know, very clear. And I have to say, it what did? Can I request a couple more minutes?
If you could just wrap it up, sir.
Yep. So they presented 5.5 years to build this. Today I'm seeing 7.5 years to build this. I think that's too long. If we do go forward, we need to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment speakers? Please approach the podium now. Last call. Seeing none, I'm going to go to online. Mani, do you have anybody online with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have one hand raised.
Okay.
That one person is Gregory Hartman.
All right.
You've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Thank you.
All right. Begin when you're ready. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds on the clock.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. My name is Gregory Hartman, 1083 Southwest 25th Place, Boynton Beach. You know, I know the city is stuck between a rock and a hard place here. The the settlement here with time equity and what they want to do isn't bad. It's the best of a bad situation. I believe Mr. McGuire just before me was alluding to, a successful lawsuit means incompetent JKM has to build essentially the heart of our city. It's pretty sure that, we're all pretty sure they will be unable to make good on that obligation. It'd be foolhardy to leave such an important important development in their hand, considering the track history now. Getting this time equity deal done, while it's not the prettiest, it is what's best for the city in its long-term interest. Tax revenue it's going to bring, the amount of housing it's going to bring, it's going to do a lot of good for the city. It's definitely not perfect. In my opinion, we're missing out on still a lot of commercial element, particularly on the Southeast First and then eventually Northeast First when it's developed. To have a thriving downtown, we need a thriving commercial area. We need to have opportunity to have restaurants that face the Centennial Amphitheater, restaurants and other retail that can face our parks and cultural centers to where City Hall and the cultural centers there on Ocean can sort of become the park that anchors the commercial and entertainment areas on Southeast and Northeast First. So what I would like to say is, once again, to wrap this up, is while this isn't perfect, it is what's best for the city. And I believe it would be prudent for us to go forward with this as a city and as you as a board, I think it is the best of what we can do right now. And yes, it will take a while to get built. It's a big project. But it could be 20 years if we don't go forward with this. So in my mind, I think it's a good project and I think we have good structure. Now we just need to work on the commercial element and work on how this can actually help us become a really functioning downtown and a destination downtown. Thank you for your time tonight, Commissioners. Good luck.
Thank you. And I just want to confirm with you, Mani, that there's no one else online. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right. Seeing no more, public comments on this item are now closed. I do see, however, that there is a member of the applicant. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Bradlin Miller from Urban Design Studio here, representing the applicant. I just want to make one clarification on the the commercial component that's been raised by a couple of the speakers that from our original application, we've we've probably more than doubled the commercial space. So now we have commercial space on Boynton Beach Boulevard, commercial space on Northeast First Avenue, as well as on Southeast First Avenue. So we've, I just wanted to point that out that that we did hear at the PND Board and and conversations with the community for more commercial and we're providing that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, I'm going to turn to you now. Otherwise, I'd like to hear final questions and comments from my colleagues.
Right. At this point, it would be appropriate unless you have, I mean, it is back to the commission for a discussion and a decision how to move forward this evening. Again, this is the first of two public hearings. If you decide to move forward, it would not be the final vote of just affirmative vote tonight. We'll move it to the 21st.
And that is when we'll hear the master plan. Is that correct?
Get a master plan.
And will we hear from the applicant, the Time Equities Group at that time?
Yes, you expect to hear from them. You'll hear the master plan and other of the other documents that were discussed this evening. Any that need separate approval will be on the agenda as well, such as parking.
Okay. Well, I was going to ask about parking. So, all right, let's hear from my colleagues. Let's begin on this side now. Let's go with Commissioner Kelly, then Commissioner Turkin. Any final questions or comments?
No, I mean, there was just one clarification that one of the speakers brought up about the lawsuit and winning. And I know that another speaker kind of touched on that. Catherine, can you just kind of explain and kind of summarize, you know, the the what ifs so that for the public, they understand what we're, you know, why we're just to clarify those, the back and forth between the two public comments?
Sure. So the second speaker did say it correctly. The result of the lawsuit, if the city were to win, would be that the city would remain in an agreement with JKM and that JKM would be required to move forward and performing in that agreement. So that that would be the net results of of that if the city were to win. I will also note that the litigation counsel to the city in discussing the settlement agreement indicated that it may actually be wise to withdraw without prejudice and refile the lawsuit with leave of court to add additional claims, which means from a practical standpoint, if that were to happen, that it could push the litigation out. Certainly more than a year before a decision were arrived at to then move forward with JKM.
Thank you, Catherine. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Turkin? This is the end. Yes, absolutely. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Cruz, any questions or comments to end?
Just really a thought. As we start ramping up events in the Centennial Amphitheater, I'm just thinking that I don't know if portable restrooms is going to be the best bet. When we think about events, we often need staff to be present here to open the door and allow people into the restrooms at City Hall. I think we need permanent restrooms outside by the amphitheater. I don't know if that's possible, but maybe we can look into that. I don't know what you all think about this. And it's not specifically related to this, but it's somewhat relevant because they are providing $180,000 for a public parking, for public restrooms in that area. So I think it's important to think about it. I don't think that the temporary ones are sufficient. And I do believe that it would be in the best interest of the community and future vendors and events to really be able to have permanent bathrooms so that we don't have to be limited with staffing to have to open the door to City Hall when that's happening. So it's just something to think about that we might want to plan for the future. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Hay for any closing questions or comments.
No, I do agree with Vice Mayor's comments about the restrooms. I would like to see them be, excuse me, permanent rather than the portables. Other than that, I'm ready to move this project ahead. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hay. And I said I would come back to you, Commissioner Turkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is a tough one. We know why we're here. We didn't. We didn't get ourselves here. I think given the community input is helpful and I'm glad that Rob Singer had reached out to INCA after talking to him and holding these public forums because, you know, one of the elephants in the room is the density, you know, and is the height. But my biggest fear is that if this does not move forward, what comes next? I know what I'm getting with this. I know what I'm getting with this agreement. I think my colleagues know how I feel about density and height. Personally, I want to go the other way. You know, this is something that was that Mr. Woodward mentioned that was done, you know, by our predecessors and the past administration. And what I don't want to happen is this, we don't move forward and we're gone, you know, especially myself. I can't, you know, fight for the decrease in density and height. And then another developer comes in and then this becomes more dense and worse. And so giving the fear of the unknown and giving the competency of the developer here, I think what's responsible for not just now, not just this project, but for the future of the east side of Boynton Beach and the downtown is to continue the conversation and continue the dialogue. And I'll ask if the applicant is willing to continue dialogue and conversations with the community as we move through the site plan. Obviously, we're not voting on that today. But I I don't want to rely on someone who's already failed once to perform this project. And we don't even get the land back if if we win this lawsuit. Is that correct, Catherine?
That's correct. There is no mechanism available to get the lot, the land back regardless of the outcome of the lawsuit.
And so I think, you know, and and no, no qualms to you, Mike, but that was a failure on our council representing the city. And, you know, it's, we're set in a really difficult position. And we we got to make something out of literally nothing. And, you know, for that sake, I think what's responsible is to continue the conversation. And most importantly, continue getting feedback from the community, listening to them. I think that's how we get unified with these projects, right? There's no, you know, everything is within code from what I see, you know, and I've everything's within the law. I've taken three oaths. I took the Boy Scout oath. I took an oath for service when I joined the military and I took an oath when I sat up here. And I have to follow what is within code and within the law. And the last thing I want is another lawsuit. I don't feel comfortable not continuing the conversation because I don't know what else can happen. And I think it can just get worse if we don't capitalize on the opportunity we have here to move the city forward and get something done with respect to community input. And the only thing I'm going to challenge my colleagues with is, you know, with a lot of these, this tax revenue that's going to come forward. And I just ask that we be mindful for the community that's impacted, you know? And I know we can't like specifically earmark, but I think we should allocate those dollars back to the residents that this is going to impact. I don't want to be biased, but I live on Southwest Second. So yeah, I'm going to be, I'm going to be there. And so I think the responsible thing outside of moving forward is knowing what the impact is going to be and being proactive. We've all sat here and talked about being a proactive commission and board. And now we have the chance to do that with this project. So I'm going to challenge everyone here in being proactive. And when these hopefully revenue dollars come in, given this project moves forward, we allocate them back to where it's being impacted. You know, there's a lot more to discuss when it comes to the major site plan. But I think, you know, today we're just deciding if we're going to move forward or not. And, you know, I'd like to move forward.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. What many of you have said, I share your sentiments. This is what we're dealt and we're, we're going to fix it, right? And we have to make the best thing of what we've got. And I think what we're seeing in front of us is a superior developer who has an excellent track record, who's going to make sure that this is done. And that gives me a lot of confidence. And listen, the alternative is catastrophic for the city. We already lost the land. We're already hemorrhaging in all sorts of fees and payments to the bond, to legal expenses. That is not a good thing. I don't know who wins by dragging out lawsuits, except of course, well, that is not something that I want. I want to make sure that we move forward and I hope everyone in the public understands that, listen, when property goes from public to private, what we can ask of them is drastically different. There are private property rights and I respect that. And as Commissioner Turkin said and others, there is something called the code that they are legally required to meet. And once they meet it, they are allowed to have their project. In fact, so much so that, for example, if you own property and you decide not to build on it legally, you're allowed to not build on it. Now that is private property. And so we have to create an incentive structure to make sure things move forward, things get done. And that's exactly what this agreement does. On top of that, and On top of that, and as you heard from our council today, you know, the protections are in place. The protections that never were before are finally here. This is why I wanted to bring on Catherine Roswell of Lewis Longman and Walker. So thank you so much because I am so proud of the work you've done here and in other places, Catherine. And I know that you brought us a superior agreement that's going to protect the city. So I'll leave my comments there because I think it's time for a divorce, it's time to move forward and time to create a partnership with someone who's going to deliver with an excellent track record. And I think the city will ultimately benefit from this in the long run. So I'll leave my comments there. If there's any other final comments for my colleagues, otherwise I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chair, go ahead. All right, absolutely, go ahead.
I do agree with some sentiments that were mentioned a little bit earlier. One thing that I believe we need to do is we need to be proactive on infrastructure and roads before this gets built. We understand that the developer has about 5.5 or up to 7.5 years, depending on potential extensions of the project. But we do understand that these years give us time to fix the roads, to fix infrastructure, to be proactive and prepared to make sure that once the density comes in, we are ready for it and we can handle a capacity of additional cars and additional people here. So I think it's an opportunity for us to be, to be ready, to be proactive and to start working on that. We do know that as a board member for the Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency, we're going to be working on a lot of projects coming to Boynton Beach. And I'm going to make sure to fight to make sure we bring more millions of dollars from the state to Boynton Beach. And besides that, I think it's important for us to have staff. I know city manager, we've talked about this before, but making sure that we bring dollars for transportation and infrastructure projects that are coming from the state and from the county to the city of Boynton Beach. It's going to be one of our really important projects and really goals in the near future because we need to be extremely aggressive right now so that we can get those dollars in the next two to three years and we can start construction. We do understand there's going to be a project from 2023 to 2027 that's going to update Boynton Beach Boulevard. And we're looking forward to that. I think it's going to give time for that project to be over and completed and then the development to be built after that. So hopefully it'll work out. And then again, I am committing to making sure that we bring more federal, state and local county dollars to Boynton Beach to improve infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I see that Commissioner Hay, his hand is up. Commissioner Hay?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right. So this motion?
We can have discussion.
After we have a second, we can further discuss.
My motion is to approve the proposed audience number 23-004 on first reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Hay. We have a second from Commissioner Kelly. This is going to be a roll call vote. But before we do, Commissioner Turkin, did you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate to the community that, again, we know what we're getting here. We have stake in the game. Someone's failed us already. And what I'm afraid of is when we're gone, the codes can change to become more dense or higher. And that is the last thing that I want. And so, you know, I want to move forward with the, you know, direction of, you know, having the input from the community and continued community involvement. I just want to continue to stress that. And so I encourage everyone here and, you know, Rob Singer, Time Equities, Bradley Miller, these guys will stay after 5:00 PM, they'll work to hear from the community. And I think that's what's most important, is that there's a collaboration. Because, I'll go ahead and say it, we didn't see that with a previous board. You know, we saw a lot of expedited things, we saw a lot of stuff in the dark. And, you know, it's, it's time, it's time to be, you know, transparent, honest, open and get everybody engaged.
Thank you. If there's no further comments from my colleagues, Mr. Mack, did you want to add anything?
Yes, if it would be possible for the owner of Time Equities, would like to say a few words if you?
Absolutely, go ahead.
I'm not the owner of Time Equities.
I do see.
Bradley Miller, again, I just, Mr. Greenberger has come down here specifically to come to this meeting and be present, be part of it. And I just want to introduce him, have him say a couple of words.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I'm Francis Greenberger. I just, just want to say a couple of quick words and don't want to delay your process. We understand how important this project is to Boynton Beach. And I just want you to know, it is equally important to us. We have a larger real estate company, but in residential development, we do them one at a time. And this is the project that we want to commit ourselves to and commit the resources of our company to and get it done in a way that we can all be proud of it. Because that's, that's how we live. Enormous pride in what we do and we hope that you will take pride in it when it's done. And our goal is to provide something of a very high quality that will complement your community. And I just want you to know that we're not passing in the night and we're going to put everything we have. I'm personally involved, but together with Rob, we've devoted most of the last year to trying to come up with a really good solution to the, all the different issues that surround the site, combine community priorities with development priorities so that there's a good mix in the end. And we have something that can be built, that's economic, that financial stakeholders will buy into. So I just want you to know, you have my commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. City Clerk, please begin the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Turkin? Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Pensilvano?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, City Clerk. Seeing that there's no other items on the agenda, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Have a good night, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.